America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Andy Mary? Jim Mouser?
Here.
Mike Boldy?
Here.
Noel Deep?
Here.
Jeanie Long?
Here.
Jessica Mead? Mary Neufeld?
Here.
Danny Pyatt?
Here.
Jamie Schrader?
Any public comments signed in here? And then we'll go on to approval of the agenda.
I move the board approve the minutes of the November 26, 2019 Board of Education meeting, special board meeting workshop on December 3, 2019. Financial report from November 2019, consideration of current bills, checks number 3411 through 3484 in the amount of $120,534.44. ACH is number 182000505 through 192000595 in the amount of $385,844.69 and one wire transfer in the amount of $12,042.18, or total of $518,421.31.
Jeanie, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear. Any questions or comments at set agenda? They will do a roll call.
Mouser?
Yes.
Boldy?
Yes.
Deep?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Mead?
Yes.
Neufeld?
Yes.
Pyatt?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Okay, then we're up to you. You're on your own, I guess.
Yeah, that matters again. Girls' basketball has an 0-5 overall record and 0-3 in conference. Their last game was December 6th, which they lost to Medford 61-32. They have a home game tonight versus Maryland and they play at Wausau East on Friday. Boys' basketball recently lost their last game last night to Menominee and they have a 1-4 overall record and 0-2 in conference and they have a game tonight at Spash. Girls' hockey is actually composed this year in multiple schools. They have a game tonight at Northern Pines and Friday at Medford. Boys' hockey, lost December 6th, 6-0 versus Chippewa Falls. They're 0-3 in conference, 4-3 in overall, 0-1 in conference. They have a game tonight versus Medford and at Appleton North on Friday. Wrestling has an upcoming meet on December 19th versus Mosley, which is parents' night and they were at Bondoel last night. Boy's swimming is currently 0-2. They have a match tonight versus Medford and Thursday at Channel. Gymnastics currently has no record, but their first match is at Stevens Point on December 16th and Friday at Toma. DHS choir had a concert last night, a holiday concert consisting of multiple choirs and the Cantor Boche choir is going to New York in April and they have a foundation on January 18th. The junior house club rang bells on December 14th for its Salvation Army and Spanish club has changed its Costa Rica ship in 2020 to Spain in 21.
Do we get a question about the concert last night? Is, are the choirs made up of 8 through 12 or 9 through 12?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, yeah, very good concert. Good report. We'll go on to new business. Meeting of the whole.
I move the board approve the minutes of the committee of the whole meeting on December 10, 2019.
Second.
Okay, any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Okay, and then we'll go on to semester one graduates.
Clint couldn't be here this evening, but each year we bring a list forward just for your information of students who've met the graduation requirements for semester. Mary Kay checked for us in Clint's absence. There are two more students this year than there were last year, but we had one junior graduating last year as well, so.
Do these students get to present their portfolios and everything like the regular graduates?
I believe that answer is yes. Laura's here to confirm because some of you, and I think I did too, went at semester time to hear them, so perhaps we'll be invited in January to do that again.
And they will be walking across the stage at the end of the year?
I do believe they have that option, yes.
Because I was talking to Ms. Coop the other night. She said, yeah, that was one thing she wanted to do, even though she was going to start taking her schooling and stuff, but she wanted to make sure she had an opportunity to walk across the stage with the rest of the graduates.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, so we don't need any action on that. We'll just go on to the crisis plan and safety drill.
I move the board approve the crisis plan and safety drill as presented.
Oh, second.
Okay, there's a lot here, so I just want to do a brief recap and then if there's specific things that you really have a question on, we'll let you ask whatever you want. So part of this, the reason that we have to have it approved, one, we always want to keep you informed of what's going on, but two, it's also a requirement by the DOJ for the safety grant process that we have got funding from over the last couple of years. They first want you to see and approve the crisis plan and then they want you to see and approve the drills that, some of the drills at least that we are conducting, they require us only to do one a year. We do many more than that, which is a good thing. So we documented one for each school. That's the requirement for the DOJ that then we have to upload. We have to get approved by you and then sign and upload to the online grant process for our compliance for that process. So one thing that I do want to point out is with the Alice rollout and protocol, you know, we really started that three to four years ago and we started obviously heavier at high school level and then worked down knowing that as we get younger in age, we're going to have to tailor our exposure and what we're telling the younger students. So we found that that was very effective to go down so that we could tell as we were hitting something that may be too much or not enough for the kids, we could adjust as we built down on it. With the consolidation, our current middle school students really missed a fair, I mean, I don't want to say they missed, but they were in that elementary zone that didn't get much. We read the book with them, started a little bit of talk with them, but then all of a sudden they were in the middle school where the previous year the middle school really had a full presentation and much more one-on, well, classroom type discussion. So we corrected that this year. We did a full presentation of all the students again by class and the way that we've been practicing at the high school last year and this year is after each fire drill each month, we do a when-then type scenario discussion in the classroom on a different topic of Alice, such as, I think the one that we documented for the high school is how to react with first responders when they come in. We're following that now in the middle school setting and we hope to do a little more like that platform with the elementary, but we're, again, we're going to take it a little slower. We've been using our counselors to really make sure that we're not overexposing, but certainly starting to plant the seeds to get there. We use the book called I'm Not Scared, I'm Prepared by Alice for that and it depicts it in a, it's a family of ants or students are ants and the teachers and it's put out by Alice and it illustrates the different actions without actually spelling out that this is what to do when someone's in the school with a gun. It doesn't go into that technical detail, so I guess I could talk for a long time, but I guess, is there any specific questions?
So the only question I have is the high school, it says that the students and parents were not notified at all. The other schools, they were notified.
Correct. Yep. And part of that is with this drill, it was the type that we cooperate to the fire drill. So we do that monthly and over the last year and a half, we haven't, we haven't really notified of each individual one. At the beginning of that process, we included the letters that we would keep doing ongoing and not that you want to unfortunately think of it as commonplace, but you know, we don't notify when we do fire drills every month either, so eventually we want to work to where the parents feel comfortable, the students feel comfortable and then we would not notify every single time. But I think like at the middle school and the elementary school, it's still delicate enough where we want to notify each time. Does that make sense?
Yeah, well, I was just wondering because with all this going around in the state, you do something like this and you know, with the smart technology kids have and all of a sudden they might be sending messages around saying, and the parents are saying, oh my God, there's something going on at the high school and you don't want the rumor mill working overtime. That's the only reason I asked the question.
Correct. I mean, I guess I'm open for if the board feels that we should be notifying?
No, but maybe just something that, you know, if you already send out a letter of some information to the parents at the beginning of the school year or something along those lines.
Okay.
Saying that, you know, we will be doing some drills throughout the year, so please don't be alarmed with the children.
Okay.
Because we do this on, without giving them adequate notice, we assess our preparedness of both the staff and the teachers, the students, so that way, you know, if there's something that we can rectify, we can adapt accordingly and make changes to our safety program. Something along those lines might not be a bad idea that way. You don't get all these phone calls, all of a sudden the cops coming in because kids are texting saying, Mom, Dad, I'm under the benches or table or they're telling us there's an active shooter situation.
Sure.
Especially with what's going on, you know, it's a little scary.
Yeah, and then most of these are conducted in classroom settings where it's, you know, the teacher that they're with for the fire drill, they come back in and they make sure everybody's accounted for and then they engage in a conversation. So those are pre, you know, we have those predetermined at the beginning of the school year what the topics are. For the most part, we may adjust them if something significant happens that we want to talk about a specific topic that week or something, we may adjust them, but we could include that in the letter that these are the topics that we'll be going through and I think that's a great idea.
Maybe the next school year if you're sending out with a handbook or something along those lines, might not be a bad idea to consider.
Okay. The grant that we got, what percentage of that money goes for this kind of stuff versus, because part of it was mental health training, right?
Yep, so there was, there was two rounds, round one and round two. Round one was focused primarily on physical things, cameras, door locks, safety film, Alice training, things of that nature. And we received, I believe, $160,000 for that. And then phase two was really more on the mental health side and Heidi, I don't recall the numbers that you received off my head.
Well, the total for the grant was 140, wasn't it?
Yeah.
In the second round?
And that was, we had to, we had to meet a number of requirements for the mental health side, but then if there was remaining dollars, we could use it for physical upgrades as well. So I think I got maybe $50,000 out of that?
Yeah.
I don't recall the numbers exactly.
We, what's in there in general is SRO training, so our, we added that. Keep in mind that we had about, what, 30 days to put a plan together to apply for this grant, so we've had to make some adjustments and it's not the easiest grant to work with the DOJ, just so you know. So we have SRO training in there for like Kyle showing to attend to get trained. That was when Misty was here, two levels, there's actually two levels of SRN training that they recommend, so we are funding that. We put CPI, our Crisis Prevention to Pay, because that used to come on our general funds or specialized, special funds, so we shifted the cost for our CPI trainers, so they got trained, that cost 4,000, just to get the training. And then we offer stipends for our staff to take it, but it's outside this holding. We put in some work with Dr. Hartwig again in the vest, but we've been part of their pilot, so we've never had to pay for the screening over the last few years. Security help has always picked up the tab. And then part of the requirements is that we form a team called the CIT, it's our safety team, which is kind of an offshoot and I, we talked about maybe combining our district way team with this CIT team ongoing. They have a, it's just an idea I had so that we don't have too many committees going, but it's a community members and school staff that come together. Part of the grant was by 2020 and we started it last year to start trying to fulfill the grant requirements. Part of it was getting trained in youth, what they call it adolescent mental health. So we had, I think, I don't know which one you went to, Jim?
Me.
What's what?
Oh, the training?
Yeah, so Jim kind of started as part of the CIT team just this last year when we had our first meeting. And the summer we had people on the team getting trained, Jake participated in the DOJ sponsored trainings that were required as part of the grant. The last thing that we have to fulfill is that we have to have 10% of our staff trained in the mental, it's called adolescent mental health, which the people that went on the CIT team to get trained did not find it real valuable, unfortunately. So the feedback that we got and we gave the DOJ that feedback because we do youth mental health first aid training that Bree Kreutz and Kelly Durline do and we've had much more favorable feedback from that training than the DOJ sponsored one. And so we fulfilled all the requirements of the grant right now. Are we going to spend down the funds? Probably not, because I had put in a lot for Dr. Hartwig and we haven't had him on site. So a lot of it was, we're trying to adjust the grant to meet the needs that we have and it's been a little complicated to say the least.
But Superintendent shared that very sentiment on Friday when I was at CISA with Pat Snyder and Tom Tiffey and Mary Velkowski and shared that exact feedback. You know, you never want to turn your back on a grant, but this one is very constricting and not user friendly and that's just the way it is, but districts are in the same position. We are now to make the best of it and.
And we have gotten Bree and Kelly, both their training for youth mental health first aid was paid for out of the grant, so we have benefited from getting some of our people trained. Now it's having the flexibility to meet our needs and to continue to move forward, try with sensitive schools and that too. So it wasn't all its loss, but Tanya has been a trooper in the business office trying to help manage this grant, it hasn't been.
One other thing I do want to add is, you know, like she had said with the DOJ, in it, it was really a knee jerk reaction set up for this grant, I mean statewide. There was the inrush of need and want for it and they had the funding, so they just kind of threw it out there and they didn't have a process in place when they told us to start applying. I mean, they really didn't. So we started plugging the stuff in and the hopes was that they were going, they allotted per building basically and a figure and that's what they figured for statewide. So when some of the districts did take advantage of that, there was remaining funds left over and they're like, well, we already have earmarked for this, so then let's do the round two. So before they even had one round, they're already throwing round two into the, you know, so it was dirty, muddy water to be at best. And as we worked through it, it became a lot more clear. One guy that really has helped us work our way through it is Ed Dorff, which now is the executive director for WISCA and he works his advisory role to the DOJ to make the best situation we can out of where we are with this grant right now. And we really are fortunate to have his insight and he helped us, he happened to be the instructor that came up and trained all our instructors for Alice. He came and did our hot wash with us. He led that whole process for us when we had the prom incident and now he's with WISCA. So I mean, he's just a plethora of knowledge and he's really helped us make sure that we're making the best out of it, taking full advantage that we can and still meeting the requirements like Heidi has, but then also, you know, one thing that last time I talked to him was that we had all the concerns from the high school mainly, you know, to make, I just called him and he had his plate full with the other two incidents in the state, but he did take the time and made sure that we were on the right track and he said that, you know, really I'd like to see, and I do mention when I talk to other districts, that this is, and it goes, Alice rollout is a benchmark that you should shoot for and that's how you should do it. So as negative as this world can be at times, it's reassuring to know that someone of his caliber is in support of everything we're doing from the crisis plan to our emergency responses to Alice, the DOJ grant, and I hold his regards very, very high.
And these grants came out about a year ago, right before the election?
It would have been June of?
It was before, we applied August of 18 and it was at that time when we asked why isn't there was zero coordination between what DPI was doing and what the DOJ did with all the mental health stuff, but it was at the same time that DPI was rolling out their mental health pathway and all of that work as well and there was no like playing nice in the sandbox at that point.
So the DOJ required me to go to as part of the round two, a?
The risk assessment.
The risk assessment.
And that's good, that was good.
Which, which is okay. But I went with the sheriff's department to a three day for law enforcement and that was, it was put on by the National Sheriff's Organization and they did phenomenal work and that's something that I want to work through. You'll see a much condensed version, but I think if I remember correctly, that the one threat assessment hack for one building is around 120 to 140 pages. So it's pretty in-depth and we do a lot of those things as we go and think through our protocols and establish our policies and our upgrades, but to really formalize it and have it, there's value to that, so that's hopefully what I'm going to be working on within the next year and hopefully at this time next year, I'll have some of that to share with you.
Okay.
I just want to say Jake, talking with my colleagues in that field, you guys have been knocking it out of the park with everything that you're doing and I think Jake is really underplaying the amount of work that he's put in and the, it's been about three months since I've gotten any updates on it, but at the time, people were referring to Anago as kind of a paragon for when it comes to preparation and preparedness in this field, so I think that's something that we should be very proud of, so keep up the good work and.
Thanks, Joe.
You guys are doing a good job.
Thank you. Anything else?
I think you covered about every possible crisis that you've, there's a lot in this plan. I mean, I, there's some of the stuff in there, I would have never given the thought to wildfires.
But we have waters.
But I mean, it just, it's so comprehensive and so complete.
Yeah.
Wonderful job.
Andy, there are a few documents that Mary Kay has, that we need you to sign them.
Yeah, she tried to make me sign them before, but I don't want to make her, but these answers. Okay. If there is nothing else, we will. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, passes, and we will go on to middle school boiler repair.
Well, as, do you want to, do you want me to talk first?
I move the board accept the proposal from PBB as to retube the Kewanee boiler in the middle school at the amount of $20,575.
Okay, so when we just, we do a soft startup in September, October, whenever the weather starts threatening to get cold where we need them and we did notice some tubes and I don't know how in-depth, the water flows through a big piping system that breaks down into small tubes that run through a fire chamber, okay? When there's leaks in the little tubes, it goes into where the fire is and it doesn't work. So we have to replace those tubes. The reasons that they may leak are age, water erodes things just naturally and also the chemical that is in the water to treat that, to not oxidize or react to that metal, you know, it's a, it's a constant up and down and we dial that in, but if you get out of whack, you can prolong or shorten the life of those tubes. That I don't think is the case, but I just wanted you to be aware of what does damage those tubes. This Kewanee boiler is?
1984.
Yeah, and I don't have any record on re tubing it ever that I know of. So it certainly served its purpose and a good life and there's a lot left to it, but we gotta, we have to make this repair. When we did these startups, we thought that we had a few small leaks and we were going to, I got one company in, I was going to bid it out. I thought we had time to live on it, we could run it and we'd be okay. Well, a few weeks ago, we had, we have two boilers and we only need one to run. The other one that we were running on had an error, so we thought that we could fire that up and that, to my knowledge was, were inoperable now and we found out that the leaks are much worse than they initially thought. So I contacted the company that had come and looked at it and done most of our boiler work in the past and I had them break those, the price that they had in the two parts, parts and labor. And the reason I did that is because the parts take four weeks to get. Okay, so this was December 2nd. So I went ahead and I thought that it was pertinent that we order the parts. I had a discussion with Julie, we did order the parts for it. I did not grant them the labor, just because we didn't need to make that decision that day, but my recommendation and my ask is that we just approve them to come and do the work as well when the parts come in and hopefully that will be over Christmas break, but they haven't seen guaranteed ship dates from, from those parts, so that's kind of in a nutshell and I think it's, we're running on borrowed time, so I think we need to just get it fixed and get it running.
So is the second boiler functional now then? You said that it doesn't have?
It is, there is a, there is a fan motor that tripped out on overload, so we have a spare fan motor sitting there at standby in case that happens again. Sometimes for whatever reason, the cycle and how it works and who knows if the air intake valves were a little sticky or who knows what caused it to overload, but that seemed to be the problem, so we do have a motor sitting on standby in case it happens again, but if it's anything more catastrophic, you know, it could leave us without heat.
How old is that second boiler?
The, so the Kewanee that's broke right now, that needs to be re tubed, is 84. The one that is running right now was the Hurst boiler and that one was put in early to mid 90s?
1998.
So are these boilers are worth putting the money in to fix them?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely. I think, I have a price on one of these out, but I mean, would you touch one for quarter million? Yeah, I mean, they're, we have two of them at the middle school and two similar to it at the high school, so. But, I mean, they're, they're fairly simple. I mean, there's not a lot of electronics or technology to them that can really cause us a lot of problems down the road. They're, they're a pretty basic function, but you know, when I need something simple is just some tubes to carry water, 20 grand, because there's, I think there's 160 some in.
165 according to.
So.
Okay, any other questions?
Sorry for the bad news.
Okay, then we do a roll call, yeah.
Boldy?
Yes.
Deep?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Mead?
Yes.
Neufeld?
Yes.
Pyatt?
Yes.
Schrader? Falter?
Yes.
And Mary?
Yes.
Thank you.
And we will go on to, I don't see yet. And we will go on to, I don't see Apple proposal.
I move the board approve the purchase of 50 iPads in the amount of 14,700 dollars from Apple Inc. for the elementary school.
Second. Okay, so we covered this at the Cow meeting. So if you have any further questions or comments? Okay, then I guess we'll just go ahead with the roll call.
Deep?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Need?
Yes.
Nufel?
Yes.
Pyatt?
Yes.
Balzer?
Yes.
Baldi?
Yes.
And Mary?
Yes.
We'll go to D overnight trips.
I move the board approve the following overnight trips. Girls hockey team funding activity at Kovak-Riemlander School Forest Facility on Sunday, December 22nd through 23rd, 2019. The Anigo FFA students attending the 212 conference and national leadership conferences to this point on March 20th to 21st, 2020. High school gymnastics overnight trip on December 20th, 2019 to Toma for a varsity invitational meet.
Second. Can I make that show a bit 2012, and it goes to 212?
That's what I was wondering.
Oh, it is a 212. It is a 212, that the digits 212, it's the name of the conference.
Oh, well.
So happy.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any questions or comments? Go ahead and do a roll call on this.
Do a roll call. Long?
Yes.
Need?
Yes.
Nufel?
Yes.
Pyatt?
Yes.
Balzer?
Yes.
Baldi?
Yes.
Deep?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
And we'll go on to new hires.
Move the board approve the following new hires. Samantha Lex, first grade, East Elementary Heather Myrdles School Lunch Assistant Middle School, and Andrea Wonka, School Lunch Assistant High School.
Second.
Good question. Is this an additional first grade teacher, or did somebody?
It is not. Tricia Willie moved from the classroom to Title I, replacing Laura Stuckard.
Okay, that's right. So, okay.
Okay, any other questions? And then we'll do a roll call on that, too.
Need?
Yes.
Nufel?
Yes.
Pyatt?
Yes.
Balzer?
Yes.
Baldi?
Yes.
Deep?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
We'll go on to donations.
I move the board approve the following donations. $9,185 from Andy and Leon Sheldon Charitable Trust for the Clara R. McKenna Aquatic Center. $5,000 from an anonymous donor for the Nabokan School Forest Project. $5,000 from an anonymous donor for the Clara R. McKenna Aquatic Center. $100 from Mary Graham class of 1971 for the Nabokan School Forest Project. And $25,000 from St. Joseph's Holy Family Council of Catholic Women for fill a backpack, fill a need program for a total of $19,410. Focus on Energy rebate received for $9,100 as part of a $10,140 Focus on Energy rebate incentive for the elementary H-bank projects.
One second.
Okay, any comments or notes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for, to all those who donated. And we'll go on to resignations.
Move the board approve the resignation of Megan Melidmi, High School Math Teacher effective January 17th of 2020.
Second. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Next meeting is, is it WA ESP Conference?
No, that's the week before, that's the week before that day.
It's the week before, okay.
Genie just pointed out under donations, Laura Metko is listed.
I didn't realize I did it wrong, so.
What, tell us, what?
Well, it's all kinds of... She encouraged us to join up her Twitter PLN. All kinds of people in my professional learning community have been doing Donors Choose, where you can put wish lists of books on Amazon Wish Lists, and then anonymous don... Well, you put your project on there, you have to, and I basically put what my student learning objective is, my SL goal for this year, that I want to get kids reading more in Spanish. And the books that I was purchasing before weren't, they were too difficult. So we now have like leveled readers for the students and our old classroom library where students can read on their own. And I knew our budget would have enough money to get me one classroom library, but I wanted to have multiple copies of sets so students could read together. And one donor was from Wasau, Wisconsin, one from Kiwaki, Wisconsin, and then anonymous donors for the rest.
And the $300 was what was left over?
No, that was for my, what my books cost.
Oh, okay.
I just purchased all the books on my list.
So that's considered a donation?
Yeah.
Okay. So.
I just knew if it was over 100.
I don't have it on mine.
Well, if I can make a point of clarification, what I was talking to Laura about is Donors Choose is not the Anigo School District. So the administration doesn't know what teachers are doing, putting on social media for donor requests. It's not necessarily organized. Policy, I just looked it up, 6605, just for future reference, Laura does say to get permission from the superintendent or business manager.
Right, I didn't know that. So that's why I mean, I did it wrong.
That's okay, we're learning.
I know for field trips, I have to do all that in advance, and for fundraising, I have to do that in advance. But I didn't know for Donors Choose, I had to do that.
That's not a problem. And like Dr. Deep was saying, it wasn't in the motion because it isn't a donation to... The certificate, the 501(c)(3) or whatever it is, that's coming through Donors Choose and not through the district. Right. There is a caveat, too, that we were always taught with Donors Choose. So for example, if it were technology, then the question becomes who pays to fix it? You know, who owns it when some, so it gets really muddy that way?
I was told it has to be owned by the district, that it can't be mine.
And that would be correct, you know, because in this case, you are, you did make the request on behalf of your students. But like Tim was saying, we have no way of knowing if a teacher is, or any staff member for that matter, is making a request unless we, you know, follow the channels. So it's just, this is designed to keep us in tight communication, make sure that we're asking for appropriate materials. But we'll do that next time. I think it's important.
I think it would be helpful to share more information about that policy because I know that a lot of teachers might not know that policy and aren't doing it maliciously or anything. But I know that some might be even putting things on social media, such as like trying to get requests for books a month through Scholastic. So I've seen that, you know, other school districts, maybe even in our old school district, where, where people they know or people that they don't know are making donations so that every student in their class can get a free book every month. And it's a great opportunity, and they want that, you know, they want to get books in students' hands. And, you know, again, just a great opportunity, a way for them to try and get some donations in. But if we can clarify and help our teachers understand why we have a policy and how we can go about it.
Yep, good point.
Okay.
To answer your question, convention's the 22nd through the 24th.
Okay, thank you. Some other convention going to... So anyway, okay, I guess if that's good, all we need is a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.